All right, we're live. All right, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments, and we have no public here tonight. Janice is on the agenda, so Erwin is going to be on the agenda in a minute. So we'll skip public comments. No late-breaking correspondence, I don't believe, Deanne? Okay, we'll skip that. Next order of business is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of December 6th, 2017. I want to entertain a motion.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections?
No.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. First Selectmen's Report. Not a lot to report tonight. You will recall that way back in the early summer, we voted to establish a Charter Commission because it's time to do that, according to the Charter. And then, going into the election season, we just put that on hold. So we're just going to resurrect that previous vote. We don't need to vote on it again. We notified the two party heads that we gave them until January 15th if they want to submit names. The BRTC already submitted a list of names.
Yeah, we may submit new names.
Yeah, I figured they might want to, you know, put new people in there. So we just said, if you want to start over, that's great. So we've got, we gave them three weeks to do that. So we'll get that going. And that's really all I had to report for tonight. Do you guys have anything, any questions? All right?
The only thing I, as we, it's the solar firm.
Oh, yes.
I, we spoke earlier today, but just for discussion's sake, I think we really, whenever they're ready, I'd like to really have our press out there and really sort of outline what's the savings going to be to the town because I think there's some misconception, but I think we want to spin it on a very positive basis.
Sure, I totally agree. And I'm glad you brought that up because after we spoke at lunchtime, I actually got an email from Simpog Partners that Eversource has granted us, they've actually said, turn it on, it's going to be unlimited power, like about a third of its actual power output, until December 13th and to, when they reconnect. Or, excuse me, January 13th, sorry. I've brain so well. So on January 13th, Eversource has to actually shut down that whole road to install the high-voltage line that goes back out to the grid. But for the, it's going to be running on one-third power starting, I think, tomorrow. So it's actually going to start cranking out electricity, which is kind of a cool thing. So, but weather permitting, we would certainly like to have a, have a party out there, have a little dedication, have the press, because this is, this took a long time and a lot of work. And I, again, want to publicly express my appreciation to the Energy Commission for all their work on that because they, they stuck with it, they had a lot of challenges, and now it is a reality, and it's going to actually start spinning the meter. So that's a good thing. Before we move on, I want to, there were two items that got left off the agenda. I seem to be in the habit of giving Deanne things after she's posted it. So I'm going to make a motion to add two items under New Business. Item number seven would be consideration of the business tax incentive that was presented at the last meeting. And New Business, item eight, would be consideration of purchase or lease of a paramedic vehicle. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so those will be New Business Items 7 and 8. So back to the regular agenda. New Business Item Number 1, consideration of appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission alternate position. And I'll make a, we had a vacancy, Lou Valenti resigned a couple of weeks ago. That's a Dem seat, so we're going to, we have a recommendation from the Democratic Town Committee to appoint Robert Stowell, S-T-O-W-E-L-L, to Planning and Zoning Commission alternate. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item Number 2, consideration of reappointment of Town Council. And I'd like to thank Marty for his many years of outstanding service and make a motion to reappoint Martin Lawler as Town Council for the town of Bethel.
Second.
What are you laughing at?
We're looking at each other, saying, who's going to tell? We've got to just pause a little.
I was going to hear about pro bono, you know?
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Marty.
Congratulations, Marty.
Thank you, Marty.
Item Number 3, another consideration of appointment, this time to the Housing Authority. They did not, they could not have a meeting this month because, according to State Department of Housing and federal HUD laws, people who are municipal officials cannot serve on their local housing authority. So Wendy Smith and Claudia Stephan had to resign their positions immediately upon being sworn in as members of the Board of Finance, which was just a couple of days before the meeting, so.
Wendy and who?
Wendy Smith.
And who else?
Claudia Stephan.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So I'm going to put a motion on the floor to appoint to those two vacancies Lawrence Bocieri, I hope I have not mangled his name, I think I got that right, and Silvano Sensamici to fill those two Housing Authority vacancies. And those were two Dems replacing two Dems. And they will, I don't remember how many years are left on those two terms, you know, there'll be partial terms, but they'll, they'll fill those slots until the next appointment comes up, regular appointment.
Second.
Okay, so any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Okay, so, item number four is establishment of a temporary ad hoc steering committee for Conservation Commission. Did you guys read that over?
Just read it, just now.
Okay.
How are you going to select the people? Are you going to ask for recommendations?
Yeah, we'll ask for recommendations. Actually, several people have already volunteered, John O'Neil was volunteered.
Of course.
There's a couple other, there are people that have just been involved, environmental work and land trust work have volunteered.
Is, I'm just going to ask this silly question, are we just cornering all of this property strictly for environmental purposes?
With the open space?
Yeah, or are we going to think about perhaps utilizing it for park and rec purposes?
Well, actually.
See, I just don't want to box it in.
Right.
But I, I know.
And that's what they're for?
Pardon me?
Isn't that what this commission is going to be looking at?
Yeah, actually, park and rec, I've looked at some bylaws for Conservation Commissions, and Parks and Recreation does more of the active stuff, like baseball fields and soccer fields and those types of programming. And the Conservation Commission would take things and like develop trail networks, hiking trails and bridle trails, things like that, which the Park and Rec Commission really hasn't had the time or the focus to do.
But my concern is, do we box it in such that, let's just say as this town's growing, you know, say we get up to 21,000, 22,000 people, and suddenly it says, we need more recreational facilities, more soccer fields or whatever across. Yes, I understand you've got property there, such as the Frank Franck property, which has probably facilities to accommodate that, but I just don't want to lock it in saying, the conservation people in the future are going to say, well, no, you can't do this, this is designated conservation.
Well, that would be up to us.
Can I just speak on that?
Yeah, please.
You already decided on the Franck property. It's been done. You appointed a committee, a committee came up with rules and regs for the Franck property, and I believe this board approved that. So that's, that's a dumb thing unless you're going to open it all up and it's going to have to be done again. The other property, I'm not sure if, I don't think there was ever any actual committee that got together to discuss what was going to be done. I, I don't think anybody really thought there was going to be a lot to be done with that property because of the fact that it's like this.
Yeah, that's terrified.
Yeah.
No, that's Hickok.
Behind it, I think.
Oh, yeah.
But if you, I'll go back and maybe try to dig them up because I remember Beth was on that, and there were three or four people that were on that, and they came up with a set of rules and regs. And, and if you also remember at the, at the town meeting, there was a lot of, there were several people that, there was one gentleman I remember in particular, that wanted to make sure that it was not used for ball fields and things like that. And that's what the consensus was when everybody was discussing it, that it was going to be for passive recreation. Maybe, I think, I don't want to speak, I'd have to go back and find those regs.
Yeah, because then we might modify this, you know?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what we'll do then, if there's any concern about that, the recommendation to have a Conservation Commission is actually part of the 2007 Plan of Conservation and Development. But what, what I would recommend we do is table this for now and have Beth Kavagna come and explain a little bit more of what it could do and what the purpose was.
Like I said, I'm not thinking 2018, 2019.
Sure, you're thinking, yeah, yeah.
Let's, let's go 10 years out from now as the town grows and we're boxing ourselves out, that's my biggest concern.
All right, well, I want to entertain a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask one more question? Where did that list come from again, from, or the, did that come from P&amp;Z or did that come from planning of park and rec? The thing that came, the notes that we have here about setting it up?
No, I wrote that.
Oh, you wrote that?
Yeah, I wrote that as a, as a proposal.
Okay.
As a policy proposal. But I use some of the information from, from the 2007 Plan of Conservation and Development, POCD. So, all right, well, we'll just get some more information so we have a clearer idea of what, what we're trying to do there. All right, item number five, consideration of the LOSAP resolution. And, let's see.
Is that the correct terminology, MOSAP?
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't that?
No, no, it's LoCIP, I see.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's not LOSAP, because that's the wire.
Yeah, it says for local economic.
I don't know.
Local community incentive, something like that. It's, it's a grant.
Right. It's that resolution that's attached?
Yes.
Well, the only thing that you should be reading is a resolution, is the part that says resolved.
Yeah.
All right, the rest is all for Lisa.
Right. All right, so I'll put this motion on the floor, resolve that Matthew Nickerbocker of the town of Bethel is hereby authorized to execute and enter into, on behalf of the town of Bethel, a special use license with the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to install, operate, and remove groundwater monitoring wells on a portion of DEEP property known as East Swamp Wildlife Management Area. So that's, I don't need to read the other part either, do I?
No.
All right, so this is using, not LOSAP, but LoCIP funds to pay for that, which is just like a general grant that can be used for a lot of municipal stuff, so.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Do you have a motion? It was first, or anyone to discuss it?
Well, that was the motion I just put on the floor.
A second motion for discussion.
Okay.
Does this have any bearings on the properties where we're proposing the new wells and stuff?
Well, yeah, I think this just lets us, lets, this is from the PUC, and it lets, lets them, gives permission to do test wells. Right, Marty?
Well, we're already doing test wells down there.
It says to remove, to install, operate, and remove groundwater monitoring wells, a portion of DEEP property known as East Swamp Wildlife Management. That's not ours, is it? What's the East Swamp Wildlife Management Area either? I don't know what that is.
I mean, is that down where we're working?
I don't know. I don't know. I think maybe, I don't know. I never, that's the first time I've heard of that.
Is this something that we need to do tonight? I mean, the?
Especially ball field.
Well, that's the East Swamp Agrofur down through there where we're currently drilling test wells and stuff.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'll withdraw the motion, because I don't think there's any urgency to this.
And they run it by Emeritus?
Yeah.
So he's aware of it, so, and we can coordinate it, and?
Okay, all right.
I don't want to lock us into something and lose our wells down there.
Okay. All right, well, then that moves us to item number six, consideration of request from the tax collector. I'll put a motion on the floor to authorize refunds from the tax collector's office in the amount of $16,258.80.
Second.
Yeah, these are refunds, overpayments. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Okay, consideration, number seven, the new item, consideration of recommendation from EDC for business tax incentive. So to get the discussion going, I'll put a motion on the floor to approve the recommendations from Economic Development Commission for the business incentive program that was presented at the last meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Janice is here, thank you very much for coming again tonight. The only question I had is the three levels, you start out with the highest level, and that's a, that's a total up to seven-year abatement. Then the next level down, I didn't bring the thing, the thing sheet in with me, but the next level down goes to two years?
Right.
But then the smallest, the lowest level is three years?
Right.
Which, are those out of order, or is that, is that how it was intended?
No, that's actually correct. What we did was we created our program to be equivalent with Danbury's program.
Yeah.
And that's how Danbury's program reads, so.
Okay.
So that's the reason why it, and so it is correct.
All right.
It is correct to read like that, but we really wanted it to be comparable with Danbury.
Okay.
Janice, I have a question about the lowest one that we weren't doing, like Danbury was doing.
Yeah.
And what was the rationale behind that again?
The rationale was that Danbury's incentive program has been in place for a really long time, and that we felt that we really wanted to encourage larger projects and bringing in medium to larger businesses into Bethel, and that Danbury probably had it at a lower dollar amount because they've had that program in place and that the commission just felt it was a really low number, and it really didn't make sense for today's businesses and for the cost of doing business or expanding business. So that's why they had decided that they didn't want to be in that, that dollar range.
And let me, let me throw something out here. If we had like a local contractor coming and was building something that was under the $100,000, I believe that bracket went up to $100,000.
Yeah, yeah.
$10,000 to $100,000.
Yeah, yeah.
He wouldn't qualify for anything.
Right, right.
Well, to that point, all residential is excluded, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the residential, but I'm looking as a, as a small contractor coming into town, wanting to open up a business and warehouse or, you know, something, he would be exempt from this program.
Okay.
That was my only.
All right.
My only thought.
Okay.
Okay.
I, you know, I've been in favor of this for the longest time. The only way we're going to grow this town, getting tax relief for the residential community. This is nothing but a plus for us, so I'm totally in favor.
Okay.
Was there any, you know, going back to my point on the lower portion, was there discussion amongst the commission about doing it at all, or?
For that lower amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, because we were looking at Danbury's incentive plan, that, that did come up because they do offer that. But we did go back and look at Danbury's incentive plans and what they've offered, as well as the new town, and there was really no incentives given to that bracket anyway.
No one took it up on it?
Yeah, really anybody that they provided incentive for was in the higher two brackets.
Rich, one of the first drafts that the EDC presented to me, they had 0 to 20,000, 0 percent, 20,000 to 499,000, up to three years. So it was different, but then after they discussed it, they decided to just go with the three, which you end up with.
No, I'm in favor of the whole program. I just would like to see maybe some smaller business be able to take opportunity of the program. We're going to have to have a public hearing, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I'll move it along, but, you know, I'd like to, you know, visit that.
Okay.
Possibly, if you can discuss it with the commission also, if you're sharing.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, before we take any action, we have to have a public hearing, so that'll be sometime probably mid-January. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, Janice, please convey our thanks to the commission and to you as well for the, I know you've been working on this for more than a year, getting the details down and a lot of research, so we appreciate that. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries, and we will move this on to the agenda for a public hearing in January. So the last item is consideration of the acquisition of a new paramedic vehicle. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor, the, one of the vehicles that we're using now has reached, I don't know, 170-something thousand miles, its transmission is going, not economical to repair. So there are vehicles available on the state bid. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor to approve the purchase or lease of a paramedic vehicle in a total amount not to exceed $48,767.49. And that's actually 37,703 for the vehicle itself, and then $11,065 about for the, for the light bar and equipment that goes on it.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Apparently we can't use any of the other equipment in the old car?
There are.
It's all, all the bioluminal equipment.
Oh, no, no, there's quite a bit of, there's a lot of, a lot of equipment that we'll, we'll translate over. In fact, if you look, in my, in my seat, this was, yeah, if you, if you look at the thing where it says specialty warning systems, it tells, it shows the stuff that's new, but then it also, there's a section in there that says, "to be supplied by the police department," and that's, that's stuff that's going to come over from the old, old vehicle.
Question.
Yes.
Richie, are you through? Are you finished discussing? Okay. I, I, I have some concerns.
Yeah.
First of all, my concern is, last time, the town of Reading reneged, in my estimation.
Yeah.
I would like to eliminate Reading out of this picture completely as soon as possible. I don't feel that we're buying a car as their services. Secondly, for new transmission, I would rather replace the transmission in the vehicle because we don't know what the value of that vehicle right now is once we strip it. Like, I'm just, I, I understand we're working through the contract with those paramedic with Danbury Hospital, and I think I'd like to somehow coordinate this thing because, I know we've got a lot of fine bells and whistles on this thing. Each time we buy one, we buy a top-of-the-line. I just don't see us being in control of this. When we get this request for a new car, we just have to just do this. It's just not that the town of Bethel's in control of it. We've got Reading, you know, using our equipment, Danbury Hospital saying they want this equipment, and here we are, just filling everybody's needs, and I just, I'm just uncomfortable with the whole situation, frankly.
Okay.
When does the whole paramedic thing come back up? Renew?
I think at the end of 2018. Like by 2019, by January 1st, we have to have an agreement in place. So it's coming up this, this coming year.
Can I, can I ask a question? I just quickly added, this is the first time I've seen this, I just quickly added up the numbers and the totals they have, and I get $47,000 and something, not 48.
That could be my mistake on my, because I added it up with my smartphone and I have a fat finger.
You got, on the second page, you got 4,909, 49. And then on the fourth, on the fourth, the fifth page, after everything else, you got 45, 25, and that doesn't come to $11,064.
Okay, I could, I could have done that wrong.
Unless I'm missing something, am I missing anything? And then the last page, you add 37,703, and I don't think it comes out to that. Let me add it again.
Well.
Because I got a smartphone too, and sometimes it's only as smart as I am.
Would you come up with one?
47,000 something. That's assuming I'm not missing something inside this, that I don't see it though. Yeah, I only get 9,000 and something for, when you're on page five where it says proposal total, 11,064, I get less than that. And my other question was, I'm assuming this is the case, I haven't had a chance to look at the budget, this money's already set aside someplace, was it in our budget? Because if not.
It's, technically, it's part of the, the paramedic budget, that's where Bob puts it, but that budget is kind of chronically underfunded. We tend to overrun it every year and pull from contingency. Because it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a hard number to estimate because you don't really know how many, how many hundreds you're going to have.
Did anybody else re-add those numbers?
Yeah, I come up with 94, 39.
That's what I think I had.
Or 94, 34, 49.
94, 34, 49.
Yeah.
Say four. Man, whose recommendation is this? Police Department or Tommy Delph or?
No, Matt Cassabecchia, via, via Bob Kozlowski.
Fix it.
All right, we'll send it back. Do you concur?
I'd like to know what the mileage is and what the cost to fix it is.
Okay, all right.
You know, if they can get back right away to us, we could have.
Transmission for that should be five grand or less.
Yeah.
All right, I'll withdraw the motion and I'll make a motion to table the item and request a vehicle status report, more information. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that carries. Okay.
I had that.
Yeah, so we have visitors. We've passed the public input part, but if, okay, so.
We saw that online at the meeting start at 7:30, so that's why we got here before 7:30.
Yeah, we changed that last year. That's all right. I'm going to, I'm, just to, just to make this formal, I'm going to make a motion that we accept public input as the last item of business on the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I'll second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good, so you're up.
We have Ali Brennan, that's, I can still, yeah. Nine Crossville Road. I just have a ordinance proposal for the Board of Selectmen to consider. I have a bunch of signatures, it's bipartisan, it's from high school students, from seniors, people across town have spoken up, and they would like us to make sure that fracking waste is not something that's ever stored or used in Bethel during construction, de-icing roads in any way, shape, or form. This is necessary because the state legislature has failed to ban fracking waste. There's currently a moratorium, there's a lot of loopholes in the bills that passed the House, it didn't pass the Senate, and so, you know, across the state, many communities are getting together and they're making sure that this never steps foot in their town, and we would like to join the 32 other towns across the state that have liked to do this. So I have an ordinance written up for you guys and some, some signatures in there, so.
Okay, all right. Is the ordinance in here too?
It is, it's in the back.
In the back, okay, all right, great.
And I can send it to you electronically as well.
Okay. A couple of questions. So you referenced the state statute, how, how is that deficient in that it doesn't prevent this from happening?
It allows, there's loopholes in the bills, the way it defines fracking waste, it allows other forms or other processes of how they frac the waste to come in. So it's kind of stricter on the language, making sure that all and none of fracking waste is allowed in the town. Right now, New York State, over 400 municipalities have banned this in their towns, so Pennsylvania has been looking for the next closest place to dump this. There's been talks of a waste facility being built in between Danbury and Waterbury, so this is something that can definitely be in our area, and a lot of environmental groups have stepped up, especially in town, and it's just more for protecting our resources in the future for future generations and public health.
How many, how many communities in Connecticut have adopted?
32.
32 so far?
Yeah, and this is just this year, so.
Just this year?
Yeah.
The past year, okay, all right.
How do you prepare it for going across the highways to our town?
Well, that's something that ADEEP is looking at right now, but there is, that is something that they're going to be looking at, the state legislature, which hopefully[1799.23] hopefully, this kind of motion of town by town, us banning it, there is an outright ban for the whole state, um, that's a federal issue.
But, you know, without, uh, because frankly, there's no, uh, fracking going on within the physical, uh, community of Bethel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you, the big, the big issue that I'm assuming right here is transportation of the material through, okay?
And storage.
And, and storage.
Yeah.
The, the storage, you know, I can understand that, uh, but on the other hand, what, what type of waste are you talking about? Because I, I'm a little bit familiar with this, okay? Um, you know, there are toxic ones and there are non-toxic, okay? Uh, there is, um, basically just polluted water which could be reprocessed, okay?
Well, it's, it's basically.
But, you know, you, 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 you know, and if the state is saying right now, uh, they don't know, how can the municipalities dictate it when the, the Supreme Court, probably the state could overrule it?
Well, there's, well, and that's kind of our, the process of all this is that town by town, people are saying no to this, so that as a whole, the citizens are saying this, it's not the.
But without state regulation.
Well, that's why this, there is no regulation right now, and this is, this is the town saying that we don't want this at all, and.
Well, then, then, then you've got to cut off the, the highways, because there's no way in the world, can we regulate Interstate eighty-four, or can we regulate?
Well, it's federal, yeah.
The state highways here, we can't.
Yeah, well, so this is like a step to a step, you know, it's making sure that there's outright no activity in Bethel, it's not being stored, and it's the extraction phase of this, that it is radioactive, whether it's, you know, it is contaminated, whatever's coming out of there has the radioactivity in it.
Some, not all.
Yes, but still, it's, you know, who's to decipher?
But, but when you go to radioactive, because, uh, the fed, the feds require that, uh, these trucks, whatever, the vehicle, they have to be labeled as such, and some trucks have to be, um, policed going through the areas if, if it's permissible. What you're trying to say to me is that we're going to try to regulate who's going to come through, and I don't think we've got that authority.
Well, this is more about, like, people using it in construction, people building with it, it being reused and repurposed, uh, it being, being used for de-icing roads, and there has been incentives for construction workers to use this and, and, and handle this in other ways that are outside of a waste facility, so.
That, that's use of toxic materials which is not allowed.
Yeah, well, we're, we're making sure that it is, and, I mean, it's.
So this would, this would, let's say theoretically, somebody, uh, purchased the Vanderbilt Chemical Facility, which has been.
Yes.
It's not abandoned, but it's no longer used by Vanderbilt Chemical, so if some, somebody could theoretically purchase it and say, "Well, we'll, we'll serve as a temporary storage like here."
Yep.
Because it's on a rail line, so this would prevent that.
Yes.
Right, okay, I see that.
Can I just say?
Yeah.
I've looked at it very quickly, three or four weeks ago, but I, I don't recall everything that was in it. The one problem that I see with the ordinance is trying to enforce it. I don't know how you're going to enforce it. I think it needs to be, I, I, I think there's a place for an ordinance, yes, but I also think that it should be done in conjunction with putting something in and zoning. You know, like, let's take that example, a waste facility, that could easily be legislated right out with the zoning regs. So now you're only talking about the use of the products, but, and the problem that I have is I don't know who's going to enforce it. I mean, you know, do you, and I don't remember, who, who do you have?
Well, there's language in here that talks about, you know, people that are, you know, for construction, that they have to sign a statement saying, you know, there's, there's no use in that, I mean, that's within the, the town committees to, uh, enforce in that, in that way, but.
Well, no, usually when we have an ordinance, at least we've learned over the years, we need to have one of the departments be the department that's going to oversee it and going to try to enforce it. Now, whether they do is another story, but, but, uh, you know, and I, that's what I think it needs to be tied to, to a department, whether it be, I don't know, you know, planning zoning department, uh, the fire marshal, the building department, I don't know, but that's what I think we've got to do, is tie it to one of them, so somebody's in charge.
Yeah, well, I mean, and this is why we're bringing it to you as a draft proposal that I want your input, you know, I want the Board of Selectmen, you guys know the town better than we do in, as opposed with laws, so, you know, to get your input onto this, to make it, you know, a community effort and something that's coming from everyone, uh, we'd like to see that get done, and, you know, we're willing to work with you and, uh, you know, draft up something new and different that works for Bethel.
Though, though, I received an email from, I forgot her name.
Jennifer Siskind.
Right, someone who's really into this, uh, I guess she's head of a committee for this.
She's a lawyer at Food and Water.
Right. What I was wondering is, and I'm going to contact her because I, I just want to know if she's familiar with any zoning regulations that want to do affect too, because I think if you're going to do this, you've got to do it hand in hand, you know?
Yeah, well, I mean, like I said, they've, they've done this in thirty-two other towns, so I'm sure there's somewhere, several others to Bethel that we, that we've done this, so, you know, there is an need, and, and the residents in Bethel have been speaking up for it, so that's why we're here, just delivering that message.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So you're, you're going to reach out to that attorney, Marty?